This morning.
Okay. Yeah, just send it to me.
Thank you.
Morning Eric. Good morning Eric.
Morning.
You win the prize for being the first person here.
What's the prize?
Uh, you get, you get to look at me, you drink coffee.
Oh, okay, that's all right, fair enough.
Yeah. And yeah, good morning Marcos. Yeah, I'm just downloading the things I have to read. The financial report. Um, I'll tell you this like while you're on, um, so we've heard from the, well, we heard from deep that the commissioner of deep Katie Dykes wants to meet with all of us to talk about trash. And last month I went to a meeting up, up there in Hartford and she seems surprised that the dissolution of Mira coming in June is caught, is forcing everyone who still sends their garbage there to look for other options. And, and, and that what's going to happen is that everyone's going to go with different private haulers and the whole, and all, all the garbage in our region will be privatized. And, and, and then going back to a public option, like a regional waste authority is going to be that much more difficult. And she was like, seemed really surprised by that. It's like, no, you're pulling, you're pulling the plug on Mira before it needs to be pulled. Um, there's contracts going to 2027, you could, you could do, you could extend this out very easily. Um, but, uh, but they, they've decided that they want Mira gone. And I said, well, you know, the cost of that's going to be privates, every towns could go a different direction. You'll, you'll never get the group again, back together again. And it's going to be difficult to do anything regional for, for new types of waste. You know, um, because the towns are too small. And then furthermore, uh, what became really clear was our regions probably too small. Uh, we, we probably would want to go in with someone bigger like, uh, like a, like the New Haven region or something to be able to get the, to get the sort of efficiencies of scale for disposing of garbage. Because we just, we probably don't have enough garbage to sort of, to, to really, you know, interest, you know, a lot of haulers to give us a good price. So, um,
Maybe.
Maybe. We don't, we don't know.
Yep, yep. It's all to be figured out.
So, yeah.
I'm not surprised by that.
Um, possibly. I, I, so Elizabeth, I'm going to log in also with my laptop.
Okay.
So I can share my screen.
Okay.
Um, I don't mind. Why, why don't I make you co-host?
Okay.
And, and then you can, you can run the, you can take over when I can't.
Okay, gotcha. I'll do it from here only because I'm logged in as co-host.
Yeah, okay. But anyway, yeah, so that's what's going on there. And Eliza, did you check your Instagram? I saw, I got that last night and I thought it was really funny.
No, I didn't. I, I, did you DM me? I don't, I never look at those. Okay. Thank you for telling me.
It, it, it's just a Lance Moore sets ironic to the teams meeting ringing. And it's hilarious. Uh, I, I hate teams. I really do.
Me too.
So it's, um, yeah, it's, it's, uh, it, it, I would recommend Eric, you Google it. Uh, it's the teams meeting music when you're connected to a teams meeting with someone singing the, singing ironic by Lance Moore.
What's Instagram? I don't have an.
It, it's, it's a giant time suck.
He's a, he's too young for Instagram. It's for old people.
Oh, is he like Snapchat?
I'm not that. No, 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 no.
It's okay.
No, I, I, I just never created an Instagram account.
You're, you're fine.
That's what I hear from my kids. Facebook, Instagrams for all the elderly's.
I've basically diminished my social media circle to like Discord and Messenger. So I only have Facebook because I have to look at some of the forums that crop have issues in town sometimes. And it's like, I don't do that at all, mostly.
Smart. Stay away from it.
Oh yeah. Social media, particularly in politics is a disaster. It is to be avoided.
My job for four years was to monitor social media for the state Democratic Party. No. I, I've had enough social media.
Oh, wow. That must've been pretty rough. Yeah.
Uh, also part of it was, you know, looking at, so obviously I was working for the Democratic Party. I had to monitor what the RTC pages were saying and for events and like tracking purposes. Yeah, I, I, there's a reason I don't believe that social media is worth it.
Hmm.
Um, and it's not just the RTC. It, it, it just feeds into conspiracy mongering and paranoia and there's no good reason for social media at this point. It's trying to be a public square when any, anyone would tell you that a public square was always moderated by, you know, somebody with a gavel or, you know, the rules. And so.
Right. And also a public square. You know, so.
You knew who the person was.
The algorithm reinforces the most extreme views that can get the most likes and clicks. And, and it's, and it, it sort of forces things out. And yeah, social media is good for pictures of puppies and babies and it should be left to them.
Well, we see the consequence right now in real time.
Yeah.
One of the consequences.
Yeah, everything is a show for clicks and likes and like, oh my God, outrage. Yeah.
John Hall?
Yeah, we see John.
There he is.
Is in the car.
I want to tell you that you are helping to address world hunger with those ginormous marshmallows on your field.
Yeah, I've got a few more to get home. I made a thousand of them this summer. So, uh, I'm working on going around and collecting them now. So they're ready for the winter to feed.
Nice. My grandkids love that farmers were growing marshmallows on their field.
Yeah.
That is great. Well, that's where they come from.
Right, yeah.
They come from the marshmallow farm.
I want a marshmallow farm.
I think we all do.
I want to be a marshmallow taster.
Do you?
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
You know, weed out the bad from the good, right?
Kevin made marshmallows for me.
Oh, yeah, he did.
Is Kevin in the room right now?
No, Kevin's, Kevin's in the office. He's not at the meeting yet.
Okay, it's his birthday soon.
Yeah.
December third.
All right, so we.
We have to think of a, a different kind of food thing to do with him because.
Right.
Cheese.
Well, actually, yeah, we're still relatively light on CEOs. Oh, I don't, um, oh, Elizabeth, oh yeah, you have the attendance list. Thank you, Elizabeth. Yeah, we're still relatively light on CEO. So it is nine o'clock, but I don't see Tony. Uh, yeah. And so let's wait a few minutes. I'll send it text to Tony. Oh, 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 he says he's in. Oh, then, oh, then, then we need to upgrade him from, oh, to a attendee. Okay. So Tony, uh, we are going to up, we're going to upgrade everyone. Promote to panelist. So, uh, so everyone, uh, please accept.
We got it.
Yeah, I'm doing that. Most of panelists, uh, Grayson Rice here, panelist Irene Haynes. Jim Irish. Sorry about that.
Yeah, well, you, you were conversing too much about Instagram and all that.
We didn't, we didn't know anyone was here. Very important things.
I was trying to get your attention, but you weren't paying, paying attention.
Yeah, well, eventually it's on my phone. Yeah. So everyone who is a panelist, I am inviting you to join and, uh, yeah, and then I see, uh, Jen, uh, Egbert. Yep, I'm promoting you as well. All right, let's see how many times we have. Wait, one, uh, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. All right, we got, we have a call, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So we'll call the meeting to order at nine oh one. And, um, first thing, uh, is um, I have an addition. I would like to add the 2025 cog MPO meeting schedule as item four, uh, excuse me, three G. Can I get a motion on that? You should have had that, uh, received electronically. Okay, I got a motion in a second. And all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. And, uh, Sam, roll call, please.
Sure. All right. So for, uh, I'll, I'll read the, the members first. Chester Cindy Lignar.
Actually, um, it's Pat Band sitting in for Chester, for Chester for Cindy.
Welcome, Pat. Uh, and, uh, thank you for being here. Clinton, Michelle, Bienve, uh, Bienve.
That's okay, Benaventia, I'm here.
Benaventia. Yeah, I just had to remember, no, no G. Quamal, Anthony Salvatore.
Present.
Uh, Deep River, Carol Doherty Jones.
It's Doco.
Oh, welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, Durham, Brendan Ray. Um, I don't think I see him. All right. Uh, next, East Hightown, Irene Haynes.
Here.
Welcome. Uh, East Hampton, David Cox. Uh, is David here yet? I don't see him. All right, Essex, uh, Kerry Duquesne.
Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, Hattam, Robert McGarry. Don't see, I don't see Bob. Uh, Kellyworth, Eric Couture.
Here.
Welcome, Line, David Long.
Here.
Uh, Middlefield, Jim Irish.
Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, Middletown, Ben Florsham. I do not see Ben. Uh, old line, Martha Schumaker. I do not see Martha. Uh, Old Sabre, Carl Fortuna. I do not see him either. Portland, Ryan Curly.
Good morning.
Good morning. Westbrook, John Hall. I do see him.
Morning.
Car. Good morning. Uh, and then for the MPO, Darlene Briggs from Millsack Chamber.
Good morning.
Uh, welcome. And Joe Commerford, uh, is also here from Sway Trans District.
Morning.
Morning. Uh, we have a few guests. Um, first I'll just introduce staff, Sam Gold. Uh, we have Eliza La Presti, uh, Brendan Garrity, uh, Megan Juflis, um, Margot Burns. Who else do we, uh, Robert, Rob Harramett, um, let's see, anyone else on the meeting? That's a cog staff. Uh, I think that's it for cog staff on, on the call. Also Carl Fortuna from Old Sabre has arrived. Uh, in the room here, we have Janice Omer, uh, Susie Beckman, Marcos Gonzalez. Uh, Kevin Armstrong, and we have Elizabeth Rosen. Uh, so I think that that's everyone from River Dog. And then for guests, uh, let's see who I see. I see Grayson Wright from Connecticut DOT. I see Jen Egbert from, is it CT Transit? Oh, CT rides, CT rides.
Yeah, CT rides.
Yeah, welcome. Uh, we have Lori McAlley from our mobility manager has joined us. Um, that's, uh, from the Kennedy Collective. Uh, we also have, um, uh, Hannah, Hannah Brockhouse. Uh, who are you with?
FHI Studio.
Oh, I think it's, I see this. Okay. And we have Michael, uh, Hillen, our, our project manager for our Safe Streets and Roads for All project from FHI. Um, and let me just do a, uh, just look at any other guests that I haven't introduced. I saw, uh, Catherine Russell, uh, was also, uh, uh, here. Uh, and if, if I've missed anyone, please feel free to introduce yourself.
Hi Sam, Carol Conklin, I'm on the call.
Oh, right, Carol Conklin on the phone. I'm sorry I missed you. Uh, are we a regional election advisor? And I think that's all.
Okay, thanks, Sam. So, uh, no one from, uh, our congressional offices?
Yeah, so I, I was actually sent a, um, uh, I, I did get, uh, a briefing um, from, uh, Erin, uh, Erin McBride from Senator Murphy's office because she wasn't able to make it. So if you'd like, Mr. Chair, I can read it, uh, to the, to the council.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. So, uh, so this is the update. Is, uh, and she apologizes for not being able to make today's meeting. Uh, December 20th is a deadline for Congress to fund the government inadvertent shutdown. We're currently operating, uh, uh, on a continuing resolution. It is very likely that we'll see a continuing resolution until the new administration comes into office. This means, uh, uh, correctionally directed spending projects may be decided uh, through by new Congress, but they may also have the chance to be funded in a spending package through a continuing resolution. Our offices will communicate with you with any relevant updates. Please don't hesitate to reach out with any questions. Uh, and then, uh, she also included information about, uh, the assistance to firefighters grant for fiscal year 24. The application period opened November 12th at nine AM and closes December 20th. Uh, Senator Murphy and the Connecticut delegation announced Connecticut will receive 77.8 million uh, from the low income energy assistance program LIHEP to reduce heating costs for low income families in Connecticut for the winter. Uh, this is the first allocation of LIHEP dollars this season. And Senator Murphy and Congressman Courtney announced that the Connecticut Port Authority has been selected to receive an anticipated 5.3 million to acquire a mobile shore power unit and install supporting shore power infrastructure at the New London State Pier. These investments through the Inflation Reduction Act. This investment is connected to EPA's Clean Ports Program to support the deployment of zero emission port equipment and infrastructure. So, yeah, so that's Aaron's, uh, report. Um, I don't, I don't think I see any other, um, of our congressional staffers, uh, on the call. So, um, uh, who did?
Ellen Graham.
Oh, Ellen Graham. Oh, Ellen Graham, uh, from Blumenthal's office just joined in case she has a report, uh, Mr. Chair.
Uh, dude, I don't see her. Do you have it?
Ellen, do you have a report by chance?
I'm here, yes. Um, sorry, I joined a little late. Um, really nothing much to report. Um, we're just focused on getting judges, um, confirmed and kind of waiting for what the CR is going to look like. Um, to continue funding the government. Looks like there's going to be another CR in December to kind of, um, kick it down the road till January or February. So, um, that's kind of what we're focused on right now.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Carol, Carol, do you have anything?
Yes, good morning. Uh, we're in post-election mode and, um, the majority of our towns, um, in our cog did very well. It was smooth overall. Um, we have a statewide call on Monday afternoon and basically it was the same sentiment for a, for an election of this magnitude. It went very smoothly. Um, early voting taking the brunt of the crowd during that timeframe. And, um, the, the registrars still have a little bit going on. Um, the state is sending them a survey to fill out. It's very important to get feedback on early voting, the number of days, all that before this legislative session. So they are asked to fill that out by November 30th and get it back to the state. It'll determine what gets proposed in this session. Um, we also had the other day, the statewide drawing for towns getting audited post-election. Four of our cog towns, um, are being audited. Hattam, Killingworth, Clinton and Middletown. Um, I have been in touch with all of them. And three of them, Hattam, Killingworth, Clinton have opted to go to the state to perform their, their audit at the state where Yukon brings in equipment. And basically it's machinery auditing machinery. Um, it, it's a very interesting process and it's a lot less headache of hand counting for your towns. Um, Middletown, I believe, is going to perform their audit on site. Um, and just that the goal of the audit, the goal of the audit is to see how well the machinery performed against the official voter list, which is the paper piece. I have been in touch with all of the towns and, um, I've sent them several templates of information, tally sheets. And they do get an audit manual and instructions from the state. But please feel free to reach out with, um, any questions for me and, um, some, some towns will have new registrars coming on board in January. So I will be keeping track of those and trying to touch base with them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for, uh, either Ellen or Carol? Okay, thank you very much.
Um, So, Mr. Chair, um, we have an item, uh, regarding her contract, uh, Carol's contract extension. Um, I'd like, uh, to ask, uh, if you would ask for a motion to move that up so we can have that discussion while Carol's on the phone.
Okay. We'll make that, uh, I guess two A. Um, can I get a motion? We'll make it two A even though it's not public speaking, but we move it up.
I like a motion.
Motion, second. Any discussion? See none? All in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Go ahead, Sam.
Okay, so, um, I sent out a memo, um, late last week. Um, our, our contract with Carol is up. Um, the, we were in a bit of a, uh, there's a little bit of uncertainty and the uncertainty is, is that normally I would, I would recommend negotiating a new, uh, two-year contract for a probably, uh, for no more than 25,000, which is what I put in the memo. But, um, the state, uh, passed a, a statute last year that funds the position with regional performance incentive account money at an amount of 25,000 a year. Uh, we didn't get that money for this election, mostly because the, because the Secretary of State did not get us an MOU with a scope of work. Um, uh, what I would like to do is get authorization to negotiate a contract and enter in a contract with Carol, but, and, and to use that authorization to pressure the Secretary of State saying, we're waiting on you to give us a scope of work. Um, uh, because that scope of work, what they expect for the $25,000 a year needs, it needs to be something, it's something that's in Carol's contract. Um, we've been funding her position through, uh, through a small portion of our regional services grant that we receive annually from the state. Um, in case we don't get that grant from, from the state for the regional election advisor position, that's what we would continue to do. Um, but, uh, with the significant, uh, with this new funding and, and an increase in funding, I, I expect the Secretary of State would want, uh, you know, a specific scope of work and probably more, uh, more work to be done by a regional election advisor. Um, so that's why the memo is a little odd. Um, Carl reached out, asked a couple of questions. I explained it to him that we're sort of in, in between, uh, i- in between with, you know, OPM is ready to give us the money. We just need that MOU with the Secretary of State. And Carol has been advising me as to when the best time for the cogs to reach out to the Secretary of State, which is, I guess, I guess around now. Um, I'm working with the Chair of our Association of Cogs, uh, to get this on the Secretary of State's agenda, um, because all the cogs are entitled to this $25,000 a year for this position. But once again, we need this MOU and we need, uh, this scope of work, uh, before March 1st. Otherwise, we're, we're, we're ineligible to get the funding. So.
So Sam, if you, Sam, if you got permission to negotiate with the stipulation, you have to bring it back to the, uh, council for approval. Is that good enough?
Yeah, I think that, I think that's good enough.
Okay, I'll take a motion, please. Irene, second. David. Okay, so this is a motion to authorize Sam to negotiate with Carol and ultimately, uh, use that as, as hopefully some leverage to, uh, get some funding out of the state. And he would, he would bring back, uh, what he ends up negotiating to us. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, and he opposed?
Mr. Chairman.
Uh,
I'm sorry, I didn't ask for discussion. So let me back up. Discussion, Carl?
Yeah, yeah.
So, um, this all sounds good. I just also think, I mean, you know, obviously there's a lot of work in this, um, especially in a presidential election, but, um, you know, I think it'd be great for the, uh, Carol and whoever the monitor is at any future date, um, to, uh, maybe you could refresh the board with a job description, uh, Sam. Uh, also, maybe we could get an idea of hours and, um, I don't know if we're tracking that. You know, just so we have an idea as to fair compensation, um, and things like, so.
Yeah, and, and, uh, Mr. Chair, if, if I may, um, um, yeah, obviously if, as the funding, if the funding goes up, um, with this new funding from the state, um, the reporting I'm getting from Carol, she's giving me a monthly report, very similar to what she is giving to the, to the cog right now. Um, we, we, in, in past years, we, we've paid her as little as seven, eight thousand a year. So it, it, for that, over the course of the entire year, uh, we, we didn't do a lot in the way of tracking. She's an independent contractor. As the funding goes up, uh, the oversight should be, uh, should be commensurate with that. And, um, and also, um, I would, I would have the assumption that with more funding would, uh, would come more responsibilities, particularly responsibilities that the Secretary of State would be interested in. Um, uh, I know that in coming years, um, uh, it, I, I don't know, Carol, you might correct me. When, when is, uh, I don't know if the, the no excuse absentee ballots will add to any of your work next year? Um, but.
That's going to depend on what happens in this legislative session. It's, you know, being on the ballot, it went through the first hurdle, um,
Yep.
in the legislative session, if it passes in there to be implemented, uh, yes, there will be more training, more work. Um, this year going into another municipal year, what you have is the changeover in registrar's offices. You have, you have two main things. Um, we have several towns who are going to have brand new registrars. And the other thing too is the state voter database is going through an upgrade. The upgrade was basically complete before the election, but it was too soon to roll it out. So there's going to be a rollout of the new voter database features for training. And there's also going to be the rollout of, uh, probably new tabulators for all the towns. They have chosen a vendor. There's, there's quite a bit coming forward.
So, yeah, I think, I think the, the idea of having, um, uh, uh, you know, the funding is effective, uh, the, the funding for this position is effectively doubling if we get the money from the Secretary of the State. Um, so having, uh, you know, oversight that, that's commensurate, I think is appropriate. So I will work with Carol on that, of what that would look like. Um, and, um,
So Sam, when you negotiate, uh, with Carol, perhaps, uh, you can address some of Carl's, uh, questions and provide us with, uh, with that information also?
Excellent. Yeah, not a problem.
Okay, any other questions? All right, let's try it again. Uh, my bad. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, Sam.
So, uh, Mr. Chair, I also see we have, um, our, our mobility manager Lori McAlley. I don't know if you have any interest in speaking under public speaking, but I thought if I'd give you the chance in case you did.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Sam. Um, I'm not sure if it has to be under the topics we were just talking about, but I did want to let you know that yesterday I, um, attended the Aging Connecticut, which is um, a nonprofit that's been started by all the agency on agings in the state. And, um, they picked many people from our, um, area, namely Joe Commerford and me, and then another woman that does some transportation in this area. So we were kind of being spotlighted for what we do with transportation and the nonprofits and services that we provide to people that other regions don't have. So that was kind of nice to get that spotlight.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, I hate to put you on the spot, Grayson. Uh, you got anything from Condot?
Um, nothing from Condot.
Thank you. Thank you. Any of our other guests have anything for the council?
I see Julia McGrath from Representative Courtney's office has joined.
Good morning. Very quickly, not much for this morning. Congress is back in a lame duck session to finish up the one hundred and eighteenth Congress. And the goal is to this week, start working again on the Farm Bill. Hopefully, we will get that done by the end of this session. There's a lot of programs I know that are very important to this group, so that is a huge priority. We're also trying to see, as you guys know, we're on a continuing resolution through December twentieth. It is our hope that we will have a fiscal year twenty-five budget at the end of that. Candidly, it does not look likely, but that is still our goal. On one positive note, the assistance for firefighters grants applications are, the solicitation is open for applications again through December twentieth. That is the FEMA grant that fire and EMS can use for vehicle acquisition or building modifications and things of the like, PPE, SCBA's, things like that. Probably our most sought-after grant in the district year after year. If you would like a letter of support, we're happy to help with that. Just shoot me a line and we will set that up. And again, that closes on December twentieth. Also, as we are transitioning to a new administration in the top of the year, you might hear from me just kind of checking in on any pending grants that you have, just to make sure that's a smooth transition. But other than that, you know, I think we are kind of in a wait-and-see period with any big updates.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Okay, anyone else, Sam?
I think that's all.
Thank you. All right, moving on to MPO business. Approval of the minutes from October twenty-third. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll move. Second.
Dave, second?
Second, Eric.
Any corrections?
I just mentioned that Elizabeth sent out a revised version earlier this morning, just but but yeah, so what's your correction, Tony?
Can you show that I was present?
Oh, yes, we will. We will amend the the minutes to show that you were present at the meeting.
I appreciate that. Okay. All in favor with the corrections? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
And and that and the correct and the corrected minutes, I'll just share a few right now, does show that you were present. So so Elizabeth did did already fix that. So you are you you you've been added back into the meeting.
Yeah, but I don't I don't, Sam, I don't have an asterisk like everybody else that indicates that they're.
Oh, oh, you're right. It doesn't have the asterisk. Oh, right. Oh, okay. Yeah, we'll make sure that 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 gets added. Sorry, sorry about that.
It's all right, no problem. All right, moving on. Michael, your presentation from FHI.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
All right, pulling up my presentation. Right, so we thought we'd take this opportunity to check in for the progress that we're making on the Complete Streets or the Comprehensive Safety Action Plan, which is the Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant that you successfully were awarded. So just providing a brief project overview, I know some of you know me and have heard a lot from me of late, but for those of you who aren't aware, the Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant, it's a new grant program through the infrastructure law that really targets our least safe roadways in the network. The idea of this program is to prevent roadway fatalities and serious injuries. And it's a very strong focus on bicyclists and pedestrians in particular, which we in our industry call vulnerable road users. So this covers the entire region. The only roadways that are not included in the region are private roadways as well as I ninety-one, I ninety-five, and Route nine, because those are limited access. And because there is sort of this focus on cyclists and pedestrians, all other kind of roads that they're allowed on are are included. We are wrapping up the existing conditions report, which will certainly be available, just have some minor revisions, but three things I want to draw your attention to, which are of particular importance, the equity assessment, the critical crash rate locations in the high injury network. These are three components that are really, you know, required by an SS four A, Safe Streets and Roads for All Action Plan. And they're of particular importance because they help us prioritize projects and understand where the most critical locations for us to address are if we want to see that reduction in fatalities and serious injuries. So far, so we're about six months into the project. We've completed pop-up events, which occurred earlier this summer or earlier this year in the summer. Ongoing, we have a study advisory committee. Some of you are on that committee. And so we're meeting five times throughout the study, and we've already had two of those meetings. We've conducted stakeholder interviews with every municipality in the region, as well as some interest groups. They we have a virtual engagement mapping tool, which is live and has been up for a few months now. We're doing our initial analysis, and I'll share some results of that in a moment. And then we've got some public meetings coming up. So our first public meetings, our first round of public meetings are December ninth and December tenth. The December ninth meeting is in person in Chester, and the December tenth meeting is is a virtual meeting. I'll be meeting with this board. This is the first of three meetings, and there's a very critical component of this, which I'll I'll get to in a moment, because there is a goal-setting requirement as part of this funding program. Just really quickly, what we're hearing from from the public, we've had over five hundred submissions on our mapping tool. Sixty-five percent of those comments relate to driver behavior, such as speeding, going through stop signs, distracted driving and the like. Pedestrian invisibility concerns are really accounting for another huge chunk of the comments. So there is a very strong documented desire for pedestrian infrastructure, in particular in the region, but also safety infrastructure overall. It's not surprising to many of you, but state highways really are the most prominent source of comments. And this is something that from our crash analysis is is really supported. The majority of crashes in the region, fatal and serious crashes, are occurring on state roadways. All right, so moving on to kind of really the critical piece of this conversation, which is the Vision Zero Commitment. These Safe Streets and Roads for All Action Plans are required to have an official public commitment from a high-ranking government body, so that being you for for this particular effort. So this is looking to have a target date for achieving zero roadway fatalities and serious injuries or at the very least ambitious reduction in roadway fatalities and serious injuries by a specified date. The program follows the U.S. Department of Transportation guidelines, which is a safe system approach, which is looking to eliminate roadway fatalities and serious injuries for all users. And the US DOT recognizes that it's not just about infrastructure within the context of the River COG region and the the MPO. What you can actually do is, you know, really focusing and prioritizing infrastructure itself. Perhaps some education campaigns, perhaps supporting automated enforcement efforts, those sorts of elements. But there are other pieces to this by having safer vehicles, post-crash care, some other elements. So just so you know, we're kind of focused primarily on the safer roads element as part of this plan. But there are other kind of components that go into it. The safe system approach really differs from a conventional approach because it's targeting the most serious crashes, so those that cause fatality and serious injuries. But it is a holistic approach that, you know, seeks to reduce that crash severity through design and but also kind of accommodates human mistakes and injury tolerances. So whereas a traditional approach was kind of thinking of traffic deaths as inevitable, this approach is really seeing them as preventable. Whereas in the conventional approach, there was this focus on preventing all collisions overall. This one is specifically focused on fatal and serious crashes. Why that's important, it's not that we don't care about fender benders, but fender benders tend to not be our most fatal and serious crashes. So this one is really seeing, okay, where are we having the fatalities and serious injuries on our roadways, isolating those and looking to fund safety improvements on those roadways? All right, so in this goal-setting component, we've looked at other regional Safe Streets for All action plans. This, as a new program, there aren't that many that are available, but we have, we are monitoring this and will continue to monitor this. But these five have recently been released. Spokane, Harrisburg, Tallahassee, Madison, and Central Arkansas. And what they've done is, most of them have placed a year of in the twenty forty's as their date for eliminating fatal and serious injury crashes. So we're talking usually about a, you know, roughly sixteen to twenty-year timeline that we're seeing across the country. I will note that although there are very few regional Safe Streets for All action plans available now, there are regions that have made a Vision Zero commitment. I know the Nagatuck Valley Council of Governments up in Waterbury, for instance, they have set theirs at twenty sixty. So they've given themselves a little bit of a longer timeline. I will note that this isn't necessarily a goal that's attached, or there's consequences for not achieving it. This is really a goal about consensus building and gaining that understanding that we're going to be prioritizing roadways where we're seeing the highest number of fatalities and serious injuries. So key word here being draft. We've started to outline some of the action language. Eventually, this will evolve, likely in our next discussion, to include whereas statements and in a full resolution, but I wanted to start by really focusing on what the action item, the action language we're proposing is. So for starters, the first bullet being the most important, River COG will aim to eliminate fatalities and serious injuries on regional roadways by twenty forty-five. We met with the committee earlier this week. And we kind of originally thought twenty forty, we pushed it back a little bit based off of the feedback from the committee. But this, with this plan ending, or our planning effort ending kind of at the end of next year, this would be a twenty-year timeline to see that elimination of fatal and serious injuries. Some other elements I want to share with you, encouraging all municipalities within the region, as well as transportation agencies to align their safety initiatives with Vision Zero. Also seeking to position municipalities with identified funding for SS four A funding, as well as other funding sources, applying that safe system approach that I just kind of briefly went over, and then working to reassess the crash data every five years to make sure we're staying up to date. All right, as far as next steps go, we'll be revising and reviewing the existing additions. And then, as I mentioned, there's two public meetings coming up. The first being in person at the Chester Town Hall on December ninth from six to eight PM, and the virtual meeting the following day from six to seven thirty PM. So that concludes my presentation. I don't know if we want or how your format works, but if you wanted to have a discussion about kind of this draft language, or I'm happy to answer any questions as time allows.
Yeah, we can we can open it up. One second. Your first slide, you show a multicolor crosswalk. You realize that's not legal, correct? That's not reckon, that's not recognized by U.S. Highway ConDOT or the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. So I know municipalities like them, but there's going to be a time when someone's going to be struck in the crosswalk, and the municipality is going to be liable for it.
Okay, so.
You check my, you check the language on 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 MUTC D and U.S. Highway a number of years ago put out a position on these types of crosswalks. And I understand, you know, a lot of requests are made of municipalities, and they're popular for reasons, but they're really not legal, and I'm afraid it's going to end up someday with someone getting struck in it.
All right, noted.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, thanks, Michael. Appreciate it.
Sure, thank you.
All right, moving on. Rob, tip amendments. You got various?
Yep, we have one tip amendment for the twenty-five tip. This is tip amendment number three. It's various locations. Project number one seventy, WCPP twenty-two, twenty-three. WCPP is the Wildlife Crossing Pilot Program, which is a new grant under the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law. This is for all phases in twenty twenty-five. Four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, eighty percent federal, twenty percent local, which is the nature conservancy, not all the individual towns, and is a new project to be included in the tip. The project proposes to reduce wildlife vehicle crashes and improve habitat connectivity by basically doing a spatial analysis to identify critical habitat blocks, wildlife corridor, and priority road segments where wildlife is vulnerable to collisions and in need of movement between habitats. I did send out the entire application. If people were interested and wanted more information, that went out with the agenda. So I don't know if there's further questions than that.
Okay. First, can I get a motion on the tip amendments?
I'll move approval of the TIF amendment, but I do have a question.
Yep, I understand. Second?
All second.
Eric, thank you. Okay, discussion, Dave?
Rob, if I may, it doesn't seem that the amendment numbers match up with the budget description in the grant. I see the total of four sixty, but I see and I see the feds at three sixty-three. But I think should it represent the state at twenty thousand and the local share at seventy-seven? Because that's what the grant says.
Yeah, I want to say it was a little bit off. I can go back and take a look and make sure that's correct before it gets sent out.
The grant says twenty thousand each, ten thousand each from deep and DOT, that's twenty thousand from the state? And seventy-seven thousand from the nature conservancy, I think, is what I saw?
Yeah, like I said, I can take a look. I want to say it was the full eighty-twenty, but there was a little bit of state money in there. It wasn't all the nature of conservancy.
Right. Thirteen of the budget or of the grant, page thirteen of the grant shows the grant budget.
Yeah, I just don't think it was included in the state side, as it was such a small amount. It was probably like less than one percent, so it was just written out as eighty-twenty.
Well, whatever's correct, I would want us to put that in the in the adjustment.
Yes.
For us to acknowledge more on the local end than we should.
Yep, I will do so. I will make sure I get the right numbers from DOT.
Any other questions or or comments? Okay, I'll take all those in favor with the corrections on the correct amount. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, twenty twenty-five safety targets, Rob?
Yep, these are annual performance measure safety targets. If you've been on the MPO board since twenty seventeen, this is the eighth time you have heard this. So you're probably somewhat familiar with it for those who have been on the board. Back in twenty sixteen, FHWA published a final rule that stated in accordance with twenty-three CFR four fifty, MPOs need to establish performance targets no later than one hundred and eighty days after which the state transportation provider does. Basically, as outlined in twenty-three CFR four ninety, these targets are from the Federal Highway National Performance Management Measures from the Highway Safety Improvement Program. There are five targets, number of fatalities, rate of fatalities per hundred million vehicle miles traveled, number of serious injuries, rate of serious injuries per hundred million vehicle miles traveled, and number of non-motorized fatalities and non-motorized serious injuries. Basically, DOT met with all the MPOs and we had reviewed all the information. That presentation was again sent out with your agenda and submitted the Highway Safety Improvement Program in August thirty-first. MPOs have one hundred and eighty days from that point to either adopt the state's targets or create their own. In Connecticut, so far, since twenty seventeen, all the MPOs have been adopting the state target. In Connecticut so far, since twenty seventeen, all the M P Os have been adopting the state targets. So basically, let's see here, F H W A uses a five-year moving average to look at the progress of these targets. In twenty twenty, D O T, prior to that, D O T did the same. In twenty twenty, they kind of revised their target setting methodology by not only using the five-year moving average, but also an annual trend line. So if you looked at those graphs, there's a five-year moving average, annual trend line, as well as a linear regression. So that's what guides the target selection as well as professional judgment and a commitment to safety. So basically, the targets haven't changed since twenty twenty-one. So basically, they're maintaining, the simple version is maintaining a target that is pre-pandemic. So it's a slightly lower target than we have, you know, following the regression lines for all five, five, five items. If you looked also, if you had looked at it, the same wheel that Michael showed in his presentation is also used in the Highway Safety Improvement Plan, you know, for the, you know, safety information. So I mean, it's the same type of same type of information. I don't know if there is any additional questions on the targets. There is a resolution, our annual resolution that we have been adapting every fall just to adopt the state's targets.
Any questions? Okay, in your packet was a resolution as Rob stated. Yeah, hopefully you had a chance to go over it. And I'd be looking for a motion to accept the resolution and authorize our secretary to sign it, submit.
I'll so move.
David, second?
Second.
Ryan, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Rob, other transportation?
Yep, again, similar to like Michael had mentioned, the public meeting for the the other, the SS4A project in December, we are having our Loop Trail Public Meeting tonight at six thirty in the council chambers in Middletown. This public meeting is to basically look at the draft, the proposed alignments that we have come up with at this point. So that will be tonight in Middletown. Also, earlier in the month, I had sent out the C T D O Ts trip no foe. Trip is the Transportation Rural Assistance Program. Applications are due to D O T, I want to say, in early February. So if you can get them to me by January thirty-first, we can go over and make sure they're complete and everything's good before those get sent out. Unlike in last year or last time, which was the very first solicitation under this program, the M P O board will not have to prioritize the project. So we will just be submitting what comes in. So that's why we can, we have a little more flex time in the date to get those over to D O T. But if anyone has any questions about the program, let me know and we can, you know, help with getting the applications put together.
Anyone have any, anything they'd like to add or a question? How's the Route nine lights coming, Rob?
I think I was talking to Steve, the project manager. There is, I think, an upcoming meeting with the, the various towns fairly soon. I want to say they're trying to get that set up over the next month or so, so you should be hearing from him shortly.
Okay. Thanks, Rob. Transit District, Brendan?
Sure thing.
Okay, Brendan.
Yeah, I have to go. Yep, thank you. So, yeah, our, we launched our tap and ride program in early October. Folks, I know this is our debit and credit card riggers in the buses. So all of our buses now have a device where someone can go in and tap their debit, credit card, or Google Pay, Apple Wallet, that kind of thing. Provides more options for riders to pay for transit, which is exciting. And we're seeing more and more people use it. It started slowly, but we're seeing more and more taps each day and, and it's exciting. This also allows riders to make sure they get the best deal. So if they, let's say, tap, you know, a few times in a day and get, they can actually get capped at a day price, making sure they don't pay more for transit throughout the day. They same as you for a monthly pass. So the rider, you know, let's say by the twenty-first of the month, for example, spends enough for a monthly pass, it will then be free for the rest of the month. So it makes sure people get the best deal, which is exciting. We're also running a Middletown Holiday Trolley. We started this last year as our second year doing this. It's a little small trolley route that goes through downtown Middletown, connecting with major parking centers to get people, you know, in the cold and getting them shopping and going around. The kids like it a lot. We'll, you know, we'll get out all the lights and the, or it's fun for people to go around that. We're working hand in hand with the city on that. They've been great partners with that. So we'll be running that again shortly, I believe, right after Thanksgiving, which is exciting. The Middletown bus shelters are also being installed. We're working on those. So those should, we have four locations that we're going to be installing bus shelters in hopefully shortly. Also, we're also speaking of bus shelters and bus stops, we're also working on a, a large RFP for a transition from a flag sub system to a bus stop system. So today, our riders don't typically wait at a stop. They can wait anywhere they want on a bus route. We don't have actual bus stops in the ground. So people actually wait on time and, you know, wave the bus down when it comes by. There are obvious benefits in addition to a normal bus stop system, including safety, on-time performance and reliability of service. So we were actually working on a program to, to have that, have that happen. So installing bus stops across the region to make it more clear that, you know, where people can wait and it's a safe place to wait for, for our riders. So that's a pretty big program we're working on. So we're getting the RFP going for a contractor for that, and then we're finalizing our, our bus stops in the coming months. So that'll be a big, a big undertaking. It could also include bus shelters, lighting benches as well at certain height use stops. So we're definitely making a lot of changes there for our, our bus stop program. And then finally, our extra mile and, and service expansion are doing well. We're seeing good ridership in, in all those. All the new services will be added in the previous couple of months. So we're seeing strong ridership there, which is exciting. So I'm happy to take any questions.
We have any questions? Okay, thanks, Brendan. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is what we added, which are the meeting dates for twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, so this was sent out to, to you, I think, a couple of days ago. The meetings are going to be mostly the fourth Wednesday of the month. We do have three exceptions. The September meeting, I moved to the week before because conflicted with the Jewish New Year, Rosh Hashanah. November, it would be the week before because of Thanksgiving. And then December meeting is always earlier in the month because of Christmas. So and the executive committee meetings, which are also open to all members and actually are our public meetings as well, will all be held eight days before the cog meeting on the, on the previous Tuesday. So, so Mr. Chair would be looking for a motion to approve our meeting dates for, for calendar year twenty twenty-five.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved?
Irene, in a second?
Second.
Dave?
Yep.
I can't see Sam.
Oh, okay.
Any, any questions regarding the schedule? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, cog business. Legislative, excuse me, legislative agenda draft, Sam?
Yeah, so I, so yesterday, a draft agenda was sent out to you. This is not for approval today, but really it's just to start the conversation. I'd like, I'd like the members to go through this legislative agenda, mark it up, get us your comments, your, your additions, your subtractions. And, and the goal would be to have a final draft ready for, let's see. Ideally, we would have a final draft ready for the fourth of December. So that would be in about, about three weeks. No, it's actually two weeks. Yeah, two weeks, sorry. So I know it's, I know Thanksgiving is coming up, but the idea would be to have a final draft for adoption as one of the first items of business at our legislative meetings of our legislators on the, on the eleventh of December. So I'll just quickly go through some of these items. First is early voting and the issue, and the issues with that the towns have faced. You know, particularly, you know, the cost of early voting for primaries and the number of days early voting. Ideally, we would replace early voting with no excuse absentee ballots, although I don't really, I don't know how that would happen, but we have that in there. And an observation that, you know, municipalities usually had one early voting location per municipality. So the large cities that have the longest lines still had issues because, still had long lines because they only had one early voting location. We have under public safety, the issues regarding the primary service area responder and how municipalities should have that, have the power to reclaim that from private organizations and nonprofits when those are not fulfilling the needs of the municipality. Also have in here fines and fees, giving municipalities, you know, the power to set reasonable fines and fees that, that cover the costs of providing the services, but also provide real deterrence. This was a discussion about how the fire marshal in, in towns where the, in Connecticut where there's a fire, a burn ban because of the dry conditions, the, the ban, the, the fines set in statute is between fifty and seventy-five dollars, which is not much of a deterrent or punishment for people who are really putting firefighters and everyone's lives and property at risk. We have a recommendation here, support legislation that protects public and private sectors from cybersecurity threats and develop greater resiliency. You know, we were hacked, municipalities across the state are hacked, and I think more could be done. Workforce issues for the municipalities finding, we have a number of common positions like zoning enforcement planner, building officials that were not, that were not training in state. And, and many times when one town needs to fill a position, they're scaling it from a different town, so creating just a vacancy in some other town. And we also, you know, part, you know, partnering of towns for, to implement technology. We're working with Laserfish with our towns. But but, you know, having state guidance to try to steer everyone to sort of common practices, I think, makes things easier. And then furthermore, for regionalizing services, the issues of labor concerns and, and collective bargaining have not really been addressed. We move on to waste management where we have the whole discussion about, you know, the, the deadline of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five and what that really means for our towns. It means that garbage disposal for the remaining mirror towns will be privatized because regional waste, a new regional waste authority will not be stood up in time. Let's see. Yeah, yeah, Carl, Carl has to get going at ten. So we have a whole list of waste issues here. Let's see, under housing, a number of different housing thing, we know that housing legislation will come back. And I think that one of our concerns is last week, the COGS cost and CCM were invited to a meeting with the state's consultant who is working on a fair share housing study and methodology that would allocate affordable housing units to each of the municipalities in the state. We are trying, we are proposing an alternative vision that puts the responsibility of determining housing need on the municipalities and, and to a larger, to a higher level on the, on the, on the COGS to help facilitate that. It shouldn't be coming from a top-down process that's not transparent. And I'll just highlight one item in here is that this fair share housing study has not been transparent. It's not been public and hasn't, hasn't allowed for anyone to sort of comment outside of the few stakeholders they've contacted, such as the COGS. We are encouraged that the consultant they hired seems to be on track. And as it turns out, has a lot of similarities with their approach to the approach we've been taking with our regional housing committee on how to estimate housing needs. So we're hopeful that they will come out with something that's actually very similar to what we are working on with our, with our regional housing committee. But the lack of transparency and public involvement is troubling. Under transportation and transit, restoring funding to Shoreham East. Some funding has been restored, but that is, that is ARPA funds for a year. So so they have to be, so more, different funds have to be identified to restore funding. One big item for the River Valley Transit, Estaway Transit District is that Public Act twenty-two forty flat funds the state's transit districts at twenty-two, twenty-four levels. C T Transit, which operates transit operations in Hartford, New Haven, Stanford, Waterbury, and Meriden are not frozen at twenty twenty-four levels and discriminating against the state's transit districts, which are on average more cost efficient than C T Transit is unexplained and unmerited. The transit districts are also get, get funding from the municipalities. So there's, there's, they have, there's greater ownership and actually greater management that allows them to be more efficient. Yet they're being punished under this public act. Also, with the state's push to electrify transit, you can't, you can't buy electric buses until you have facilities to charge them. So it's very simple. And Estaway Transit District has gotten its first two electric buses. Those two buses required significant electrical upgrades to be able to charge. So if you, you can imagine, a whole fleet will require two megawatts of electricity. And, and so you, you can't just plug that in. It needs to be built out. Other items. We have a couple workforce development items and planning. Let's see. Keeping the COGS funding, you know, stable is going to be important moving forward. We made sure to put in something to support tourism promotion in the state. We're quickly approaching twenty twenty-six, which is the two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday of the country. And Connecticut has not identified funding to promote Connecticut in that year. And, and that's, that's a concern because Connecticut has a lot of colonial history that we could be, we could be attracting tourists and revenue for our tourism oriented businesses. And, and it seems like our neighbors in Massachusetts and New York might get those tourists instead because of the promotion they're doing. And Signia, and I, I think, I think we still have quorum, so I think we're good based on the comment. I'm just looking, we have revisiting the police accountability law. Yeah, so, and then, and then some environmental and energy comments, infrastructure about high-speed internet. Prioritizing state money for matched to federal, federal dollars as opposed to fund bonding hundred percent state projects. Not, not further limiting municipal abilities to tax to and yeah, so please look through this. You can get your comments back to me or to Eliza. We will incorporate them in, into this, into this document. And as we make the edits, we'll send out a couple intermediate drafts for people to look at. And the goal is to have something to send out on the fourth of December. So please take a look and get back to us with your comments.
Okay. Appreciate it, Sam. Anybody that has any comments, mark it up and send it in to Sam, please.
And, and Tony, what we could do is actually if people get their, get theirs in by, by Monday, the second of December, we could review them at the executive committee on the third of December. And, and then, and then have a draft out for the fourth or fifth to send out to everyone.
Agreed, we'll have it. We could meet that timeline. We'll, we'll have it at the next meeting.
Yeah. And, and yeah, and, and please feel free to send it to me or Elizabeth or really, and Mark, I'll call on Marcos Gonzalez, who's, was a great help on, on, on organizing and getting this, putting this all together with all the comments. So we, we, we'll bring everything together, have something for the executive committee and then, and then hopefully get it out to, to all the members and to the legislators. So they have time to read it and review it before our meeting with the legislators on the eleven.
Thanks, Sam. Regional Waste Authority, Janice?
Yes, good morning. We are in the process. We have received seven.
We are in the process, we have received seven proposals to, for, to be a contractor for our grant. We're in the process of reviewing them. We have four CEOs that are helping with that process. Recycling Coordinator in Middletown and four people here from River Cog are going to be reviewing those seven proposals, selecting three or four that we will be setting up interviews. If the proposals could be in by tomorrow, please, we would like to be able to contact whichever vendors are selected and start interviews fourth and fifth of December. So it's a quick turnover there, a quick process, but if we can get these going, we can possibly getting our contractors selected and getting everything organized to start in January. That's the plan.
And, and just, you know, at this, at this point, we're just trying to reduce that number of seven to hopefully four, if not three, because that, you know, the fewer we interview, the easier it is for everyone. But, but yeah, so right now the read-through for the people, for the CEOs who are reading through the RFP responses, it's who, who interested you enough to actually interview and who are you not interested in interviewing? And then what we will do is we will re-score the applications after we interview our final, our top finalists and, and make a decision. And I will add to Janice's report, we heard from Deep that the commissioner would like to set up a meeting with the CEOs of the River Cog region. She wants to talk about trash and the issues. We had a meeting with, with Deep's waste staff and the commissioner attended part of that meeting. And she was interested to hear that the municipalities in our region who still send their waste to Mira are considering going different ways to find private haulers because of the impending June thirtieth, this final dissolution of Mira. So she seemed surprised by that, but, but without the certainty of what's going to happen after June thirtieth, the CEOs really have no choice. So she, she, we asked for the commissioner's availability for dates and times. Once we get that, we will poll the CEOs to find a, a date and time that works best for the most of you and get that, get that meeting set up.
Okay, anybody got any questions? Or either Janice or Sam? All right, thank you. Also has this waste, Janice?
Yes, okay. The season has completed, we're all finished, I have finished our final report. Figuring out how many pounds of all the different types of waste that we've collected. And it was a stellar year, we collected three-hundred-and-forty-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-five pounds of waste at our hazardous waste collection. That was an increase of twenty-one percent over twenty-three. So that was a big jump, but in twenty-two to twenty-three, there was a decrease. So we're kind of moving along, increasing somewhat, probably around seven percent on an average. So thank you all for that. I am trying to organize also the paper shredding event for our next year. And with some work that Kevin did here, we were talking about doing a hard drive collection that would be an additional vehicle at our paper shredding event. They talked about having a cost of thirteen dollars and forty-four cents per hard drive. I thought that was a little steep. I am asking if, is that an issue in your municipalities with disposing of hard drives?
How would we even know?
But this, this is a question for Janice, can't, can't you drop those off at the electrons recycling at the transfer stations?
If you would like to, but you don't know that they're being disposed right then or who's going to get them or whatever, this would be onsite.
Erasure and.
Yeah, yeah, they crunch them, yeah.
Can you just hammer a nail through the hard drive?
I was gonna say for thirteen bucks, I'll drive a screwdriver through the hard drive and then take it to.
Just make sure it's not a battery.
The, the only true way to get rid of the hard drive is to grind it up into confetti.
All right.
And, and I got that from a past life.
I, I don't, I don't think there's an interest in the hard drive, Janice.
Okay.
I do have one question for Kevin, why was it not thirteen dollars and thirty-seven cents?
Yeah, right.
I know, missed opportunity there.
I know.
All right, I, I think we'll pass on the hard drive.
Got it, okay.
Thank you. Any other questions for Janice? Hey, great job, Janice, I, I visited the site a couple of times and when you're out on the satellites and really you do an outstanding job with that collecting hazardous materials, et cetera. Thank you. Shoreline Basic Needs Task Force, Janice?
Yes. I had sent out, or Elizabeth had sent out earlier some dates that the Shoreline Basic Needs Task Force is having November community meal schedules and food pantries that covers eight municipalities in our region, but any town can come to any of those. The other nine towns, I reviewed the websites and they all had dates and information about what they're offering also. So it looks like we're covered well in our region for services. Just wanted to mention that the two-one-one calls that are coming through in Connecticut, the people's needs are kind of changing, they used to be housing and food and now it seems to be more mental health, crisis and addiction. There's an additional nine-eight-eight suicide and crisis lifeline that came up in twenty-two that, that's getting more people calling through that, so that's helping. And of course, the nine-one-one would direct them to either the nine-eight-eight or two-one-one phone line. So it seems to be working well and progressing. Lastly, this is kind of the time of year that there's a lot of donations for food pantries and community meals and I thank everybody that will be doing it. That's my report.
Thanks, Janice. Any questions for Janice? Okay. Hazardous mitigation, Margot?
Margot, Margot, I muted you.
Margot, so, yep.
Good morning, everyone. Let's see, just a quick update for the natural hazard mitigation grant is that we should be getting the final documents for that at the end of the year, they told us. So then we can move forward on that. And the request for proposals was done, we just need to decide when the best time to, to send that out to get, you know, consultants submitting proposals for us. I, I suppose, you know, probably the middle of December might be good. But Sam, I don't know when you think that is, but.
Yeah, no, yeah, it's on my, it's on my to-do list, let's, let's, let's get it out this week. But I, I, I'm, I'd like to get it out as, as possible because we'll need a month to, for the responses.
Yeah. And then the other update with that is that Kevin's doing a great job putting a mapping application together from the projects from the last update so that we can have that when we go to each of your towns to show you, illustrate where all of the past projects was and that were. And I think that that will help facilitate those conversations a lot. So it's going to be, you know, really useful, Kevin's doing a great job on that. And that's with some CIRCA funding that we had, had gotten from last year. It was some funding that was left over from the, the whole sequence that we went through to check out the, the roars that we have one going in East Tatum and one going in Portland right now. The resiliency corridors, so that's where he's got the funding fund from to do that mapping. So it'll be very useful for us, I'm really happy about that.
Okay, any questions from Margot on hazardous mitigation? All right, Land Trust, Margot?
So we have our second meeting for the conservation plan update tomorrow. So I don't really have any more of an update on that, although we are working on getting climate change into the, the model for that. So that, that will be going on. And if any of our communities want to put a rep in for the last of the three of the four meetings, it's not too late, but please have them come tomorrow if you, if there is, if you've decided that you'd like to have somebody participate. But they would need to be there for the rest of the meetings, it's just not a one-time thing. And then we have our annual meeting for the Land Trust on December nineteenth. Dr. Ben Sperry from the Army Corps is, he's a researcher for the Connecticut River Hydrala Project. Will be presenting at the annual meeting and it's at, dinner will be at five-thirty, presentation at six. So hopefully, I would love to have our first selectman attend that. Would be very informative for you to see Dr. Sperry.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, Marla, thank you. Invasive species?
Just a, a quick update on our water chestnut grant with Connecticut Deep. I spoke with the program manager yesterday and asked if we could extend the grant for another season so that it would be next season and the season after that. Because we do have enough funding for staffing that in the grant. And he thought that that wouldn't be a problem, so that's good. And we have quite a bit of money for fuel left in the budget. And I asked if we could move that into our equipment category, which would help with paying for the dock and any needs that come up as far as the boat goes. So we're, we're gonna wait for final okay on that, but he didn't see a problem with it. So that's really good news that we can extend the grant another year. And then we do need to look at the budget, Paul, Sam and I pour that and, and talk to you about that in, I guess, January now, after Christmas. Last year it was a hundred dollars for each town to help with the water chestnut program. And I don't anticipate it being any more than that, than that for next year, especially since we've moved some of this funding around. And the other item that I want to talk to you about in January is debris removal. And we had quite a bit of water chestnut debris last year. And I was able to get rid of it in my, basically in my yard, at the top of my yard, I have a perfect sight. And it, it does go away quite quickly, but it would be great to have a municipal site to just be able to, to take the debris to. So that's something I'd like to talk to you about. So if any of you have locations at your town dumps that are upland areas that we could do that with, that would be really great. Last year we had, this last season, probably about, haven't put all the numbers together, but between twenty-five and thirty truckloads of F-150 Chevy dump truck, I mean, not dump truck, but pickup truck pulled to the brim. And I will say it goes away very quickly, there's no, I have just a little bit of residue left in my yard. So it's not something that hangs around for a long time because the plant is about ninety percent water. So it does, it does decompose quite quickly once it's out of the water. But it isn't.
Okay, thank, thank you, Marla, any questions? Thanks, Margot. All right, municipal compliance report, Sam?
Sure, so there, we got, we were somewhat surprised by this. It was, at first we were, we were concerned about where this was coming from. We thought it was eight-thirty J, which was the affordable housing plans. What we found out was that this is an annual requirement of a statute about childcare homes in your town and a sworn certification from the CEO that your zoning requirement, your zoning regulations are in compliance with the state statute or you communicate how you're going to become, go into conformance with the state statute. It, it's a very odd requirement because it requires annual certification. Speaking to OPM, I think there's an interest in repealing this. But Eliza did come up with a list of the towns and where they stand. And we can send you the link to the OPM website that sort of explains what this is and, and how to, and, and how to comply. So I'm actually, I'm gonna come up, I'm gonna find that link and put it in the chat and we'll, we can furthermore send out to everyone this link. And, and Eliza, if you would just, you know, review where the towns stand.
Sure, absolutely. I did send out the, the link as well when I sent this initial email and I only sent it to the towns that OPM believes or non-compliant, sorry. So right now it's Clinton, but I talked with Abby, I think that, that is in the works for Clinton. Cromwell, I haven't heard from. Deep River, I talked to John and Zoe, it looks like they are taking care of it. Durham, Robin believes that they are compliant, she's gonna check with the state. East Hampton, Juliet says that it is on the agenda for the meeting in December. Lyme, I didn't hear from. Middlefield, per Robin, they are working on it now. Middletown, I didn't hear from. And Old Lime, Eric says they are working on it and he will communicate with the state, so everybody else is all set.
Eliza? Did you send that to Stuart in Cromwell?
I did, yeah.
And you didn't hear from him?
No, but I, I didn't really ask for anybody to respond to me, so he may have already worked out with the state.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on the compliance report? All right, thank you very much. Moving on, Suzie, Demis?
Yes, sir. So you recall that a couple of months ago, this board sent a letter to the Connecticut Demis Office and to the Demis Region Two leadership requesting an additional five thousand dollars for providing fiduciary agent services over the next grant. And that was determined by the Demis Office and by the Rapt leadership that they did not want to pay the additional five thousand dollars that was requested. Therefore, they are seeking a new fiduciary agent. In the meantime, I have been directed by the Connecticut Demis Office not to do any work on the twenty-twenty-four Demis Grant and either of the grants, the ALCA or the ALCA, there are two different ones. And we are waiting for a report from them. They didn't have a report last Friday at their monthly November meeting, but said there will be a report in December on where they, the office, Connecticut Demis Office and the leadership for the Rapt are in finding a new fiduciary. In the meantime, I have, the good news is I've caught up on some of the deliverables that have been due over the past few years and we should have some of that, those funds coming in to help pay for fiduciary services. Anything else?
Yeah, I'll add to that. During the meeting, our attorney, Steve Menick, gave me a call. We've asked him to look at the MOA process where, whereas all the municipalities in Connecticut delegate the Demis Region to accept this Homeland Security Funds for emergency preparedness and homeland security reasons. As we dive into this, we have lots of questions, like the MOA is very clear that the money can't be spent until all the MOAs are in, but we're still collecting MOAs from twenty-twenty-two on grants we've already spent, so. One, the the item that we've asked Steve Mendick to look at, look at is. Couldn't there be some sort of longer-term agreement with the municipalities in the Demis Region? That wouldn't require so much paperwork. And that would save time and and reduce the cost for the fiduciaries to administer the Demis Grants, so. I'll be calling him back after this meeting. And and just, and I've also reported this to the other COGS and the fiduciaries of of Demis across the state. Saying that we're doing this on the behalf of our region. But if there can be any benefit and any streamlining of this process that can be found, we hope that everyone would benefit from it. So, yeah, so that's that's where that stands.
All right, does anyone have any questions for Suzie or Sam? Okay, thank you very much, Suzie. Executive Directors Report?
Sure, I will, I have a quick financial report from Paula. As of October thirty-first, the council has completed four months of this fiscal year. Twenty-twenty-five, and overall spending is within the parameters of this adopted three-point-two-million-dollar budget. As of October thirty-first, our stiff account totaled one-point-nine million and our Liberty checking account balance was sixty-one thousand four-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars. Also, this was an item that didn't make it on the agenda is at. We, I would like to ask the members. Who are serving on the executive committee whether they would are interested in serving another year on the executive committee as officers. And and if so, we we would want to appoint a nominating committee of those members who are not interested in serving on the executive committee, so. We we should have elections for our twenty twenty-five officers. If you're interested in serving or you're interested in serving on the nominating committee, please contact me. And we'll have the appointment of that nominating committee at our next meeting. And and then elections will be held first thing at the January meeting.
Okay, thanks, Sam. Speaking of which, the next meeting is a lunch meeting. Twelve o'clock, Sam?
Yeah, twelve o'clock, we're going to be meeting, Tony will be hosting us, and is it the the building room?
Yeah, when you when you come into the parking lot, the town hall is on the right. It's this is part of the library, you see the library is on the left and the building room is right in the center between. Both entrances, and it's marked on the the building itself. So we look forward to seeing you next month on the eleven at twelve o'clock. And we are in the process of arranging lunch.
And and we will be sending out invitations to all of our legislators, to our our new and our returning legislators. I would ask you to remind your legislators of the December eleventh lunch meeting, where we'll be treating them for lunch. So hopefully we can get a good number there. The the room does have audiovisual capabilities, so we will be able to have a Zoom component for those legislators. Or members who can't attend in person, but we're not, we're not giving you lunch.
Yeah, good one, Sam. We'll give you a voucher. Does anybody have anything for the good of the council? Okay, seeing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Dave and. Carol? Second? All in favor? I? Any opposed? I didn't think so, have a great day, everybody stay safe, and we'll see you on the eleven.
Have a great Thanksgiving.
Okay.